Okay, so thanks everyone for tuning in. We got Melissa, a couple of people kind of straggling in here. We've only got an hour, so I'll move us along. And so what we're gonna do is this is this is basically a discussion. It's kind of a, you know, no partisan agenda here. This is really just a discussion of the issues. And I think we're gonna follow more or less the format that we follow in town meeting itself, which is we've got folks who are gonna kind of present these articles. Then we might have people who have opposing views to present, and then we'll just have a discussion of it. I was talking with, just going through these, given the, you know, short time we have, I thought we were, I think we're gonna focus on the issues that bear discussion. And then if we have time at the end, we can go back to some of these more kind of nitty-gritty articles that are before us. So the ones I think that bear discussion are two, Article Two on the municipal light board, Article, let's see, 10 on the Indigenous Peoples' Day, Article 11 fossil-free new construction. And then I think, Phil, you were saying that Article seven and, sorry, is it eight and nine have been withdrawn for now?
Yes.
Okay, and Article seven, the Brave Act?
Yes, is considered to be a financial article, and therefore it's moved to the financial part of town meeting.
Okay.
That said, real briefly, Paul, I would be happy if anyone here wants any information on that. Full disclosure, my family is one of the families in terms of the employee provision that would be affected. So if anybody has any questions about it whatsoever, email me, text me, call me. If you don't have my information, I'm happy to put it in the chat. I know we don't have time for tonight, but I just want to make sure. It's being a little bit mischaracterized, so I just want to be clear for anyone who has any questions about the implications and what it would actually mean to the families. And for the record, if you have your vaccination, the Brave Act would have helped make that even easier on us, so.
What article was that?
That is seven.
Seven, okay.
And Paul, you're four and eight are welcome to do what you want, but what Julie and I are gonna do for Precinct Five and Six is we're gonna have another pre-meeting in advance of the next town. Yeah, we're brave.
Right. Okay, so the order we're gonna go in numerically would be two, two, 10, and 11, and then if we have time, we can go back and, you know, three, you know, one and three obviously don't really bear discussion. We can talk about four, I guess, five and six. If, once we're through the sort of more ones. And then again, yeah, I think having a follow-up meeting before we, as town meeting meet, to discuss the budgetary articles is a good idea. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yep, fine.
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna hand to Phil Thayer, who is gonna be presenting Article Number Two, Phil.
And if you could make me host so that I can share my screen?
I will, one sec. Well, you can share your screen now. Do you want me to make you host, or do you just want to be able to share your screen?
Let me see if I can do this, okay. Share. Okay, and then.
There you go.
BYOB, I should have put that in the invitation, but.
Okay, and from the beginning.
It's just the like.
There we go. Okay, good, okay, yeah. So my name is Phil Thayer, Town Meeting Member. I'm a Chair of Sustainable Belmont. And I've been, I've been attending almost every light board and Light Board Advisory Committee meeting over the last seven years. So I've been following the issue pretty carefully. And so when, when this issue came up a year ago, and Roy proposed a warrant article to make this governance change, I was, I've been following along. And Roy would have been making this presentation, but of course, he's doing the select board right now. So what I'm gonna show you is, are a presentation that's probably gonna be pretty close to what Roy is going to present later tonight, as well as in the floor of town meeting. It's not gonna be exact, because there have been some changes, but it'll touch on the important points here. So this is really just an article to change the way Belmont Light is governed. Belmont Light is a light department. It's, I mean, it's not just another department of town. It's a, it's a separate entity that is governed by a separate chapter of, of Massachusetts general law, separate in some ways, the way that the Water Department is separate, where their funds are separate. So with that, I will move on. So the thing that's happened to the electric utility industry is that it's gotten increasingly complex in the last 25 years. It demands more time, more attention, more expertise. There's, it's not the way it used to be where the Belmont Light would go to the, to the select board, acting as the light board once a year to just approve power purchase agreement from a single provider. Now there are multiple providers. Now there is, there are different types and durations of power purchase agreements. There are situations in town where people are, have solar on the roofs, and they're generating power. So it's a whole new world, but instead of a central distribution of energy, it's now a decentralized distribution of energy. So that's, that's what it's been like over the last 25 years. It's gotten a lot more complicated than it was back in 1938, when the select boards became the light board. And the governing board should consist of members who are knowledgeable in utility industry matters, have time to examine policy in detail, can be separate, can be a separate voice for Belmont Light, and in a way, be a separate voice for the ratepayers as opposed to the taxpayers. And they, those interests, most of the time overlap, sometimes they don't. And that's why it's really important that there's a separate voice for the ratepayers. And then just eliminate, it eliminates the duplication of function. In this case, we've got the light board, which is the select board, and then a separate body, which is the Light Board Advisory Committee. And Belmont Light effectively is having to report to and work with two separate bodies, which is confusing and time-consuming for Belmont Light. So independent dedicated board has been recommended for more than 15 years. Back, back in 2004, the Electricity Supply Committee recommended a new single-purpose light board. The, in 2009, Paul Solomon, I don't know how many of you have been around, but Paul Solomon is a former Select Board member, member of the light board. And then after he stepped down as a Select Board, agreed to chair the government structure review committee, where he looked at the, this, the structure of all committees and boards in town. And at that time, in 2009, he recommended that there be a separate light board. And then Massachusetts Department of Revenue, as part of their financial review of Belmont back in 2011, noted that the town had not, had yet to create such a light board. And then in July of 2020, the Light Board Advisory Committee voted for a separate five-member elected board. And what do the other 40 municipal light plant in Massachusetts do? A majority of them are governed by separate elected light boards. So that the, this tall bar here in the middle, can you see my cursor? Is, is, these are the independent elected that are either three-member or five-member, and then a smaller number of independent appointed. And select board is actually very few. In fact, Belmont is the only one of the 40 municipal light plant towns that has a three-member board that serves as the select board. And the, and due diligence by the light board over the past nine months, it has, they've done a lot of due diligence to try to get input from residents and subject matter experts, you know, what should be the structure? So that, so there was a petition with 116 signatures submitted to the select board. Last year, they, the light board held a public forum in December, attended by 66 residents, another one in January of this year, attended by 40 residents. And the consensus that emerged from that discussion was for a separate five-member elected light board. And by the way, there were light board members from some of the other towns who attended to answer questions of the light board, as well as of the residents, about what it's like to be in a town where the light board is a separate elected body. So just a closing thoughts, the, on the five-member selected, elected light board is, it is provided for under Massachusetts law. So it doesn't require an act of the legislature the way other structures such as appointed would require. It's, it's a structure of that we're elected. Board is directly accountable to the voters. It removes the appearance of a conflict of interest between the interests of ratepayers and taxpayers. Five members allows for parallel work, whereas a three-member board can't deliberate outside of open meeting. And the, and Belmont Light has made, had done such fantastic work over the last three years, and they've got a lot more work to do. It's just with a, with an active, engaged light board, parallel work is really, really helps to help them catch up on their work and be efficient. And then it's, and again, a separate elected light board is gonna immediately improve Belmont Light's morale and productivity. It's, if you've ever worked with, with any, it's very confusing for any entity to effectively report to two separate boards. It's much better to have one board, and that board having the time and the expertise to give the firm the guidance that it needs. And then another question that came up is, will there be residents who will be willing to run for these light board seats? And I did a poll of residents that showed 12 are willing to run. So I think that there is a lot of interest in, in electric utility issues and policy that there will be, it will be a competitive seats. And this is the exact wording of the article. And it's really the vote for yes would authorize that a separate elected body, and they would be elected next spring. There'd be an election for all four, five seats. And then that light board would decide what to do with the light advisory board, dissolve it, or reconstitute in some way. Presumably, a lot of the members of the Light Board Advisory Committee would run for those light board seats. So that's the wording, and with that, I'm just, I'm just gonna.
You're gonna have, you don't have all five of them. Once you, when you first go out, you're gonna go one for one year, one for two years, one for three years, and go up the ladder like that.
Yeah, yeah, like that, Don, I believe so. Somebody asked me this question earlier, and I believe it would be introduced just the way other appointed boards transition to light boards, to elected boards in town. Any other questions?
For your information also, this, this is almost a mirror image of what we do also in New Hampshire, where they have a New Hampshire Electric Co-op. That's, that's all elected board members that run for that, for that office. And so it's an independent operation. And this is what they're saying here, that these five people are gonna be in charge of setting the rates and the other conditions. It's gonna be a separate identity and entirely unrelated to the town itself, which is probably the best way to go.
This is, is this salary, that people receive a salary?
It's not a salary, it's a volunteer position.
Thank you.
I think probably before we even start discussion, I'm sorry, I probably should have had everybody just go around quickly and introduce themselves, and then maybe we can, we can swing into a discussion. Don, why don't I, why don't I just kind of go as I see them? Don, you already spoke, but maybe just say hi to the group.
All right, Don Mercy, Precinct Eight.
I'll go next, Paul Roberts, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. I've been on Town Meeting since, I don't know, I think I'm in my fourth term or something like that for a long time, so, fourth or fifth term. Phil Thayer, next?
Yep, Tommy Member, Precinct Six, for, I think, coming up on 20 years.
Carolyn, you're next.
Yes, yes, Carolyn Bunyan, Precinct Eight, and I've been on for quite a while.
They're all blurring together. Elizabeth?
Yeah, this is Bethany Schmidt, Precinct Four, this is my 10th year.
Great, Alex?
Alex Fick, I'm a senior at BHS, I live in Precinct One, but I'm here to present about Article Ten.
Great, Marty?
Marty Bitner, Precinct Eight, I've been in Town Meeting for about four years.
And Sheila, my co-host.
Sheila Flueeling, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member, for a number of years.
Roger?
Reed, Precinct Eight, been a Town Meeting Member for about eight years.
And Anthony?
Anthony Farante, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. I've been, I think this is the start of my top year.
Our newest member, Dave DiMarco.
Dave DiMarco, Precinct Eight, brand new.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Glad to be here.
Kevin Cunningham, Precinct Four, and also, I think this is my third term, and I was on the school committee for a full term and then a part of another term.
Melissa?
Melissa Irian, Precinct Eight, and this is a Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, and this is my fourth term as well.
Thanks, Melissa. Sharon, our other new member.
Hi, Sharon DiMarco. He didn't mute his phone, Paul. Glad to be here.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Ms. Cowing?
Fitzie Cowing, I think this is actually lucky number 13 years in Town Meeting, if I did my math right.
Sounds about right.
See how that pans out for me? And also a current member of the DPW BPD Building Committee.
Judy?
Hi, it's Judy Brown, Precinct Four, and you know, I think around 15 years.
It's hard to keep track.
Yeah.
We should, we should have a board or something in Town Meeting, so we can see like a.
I'm back to Don Mercy, everybody's saying how long, I've probably been 32 years.
Yeah, yeah, Don, you're the, you are the, you are the emeritus. You're the Town Meeting Member Emeritus. Okay, thanks, I think I got everybody. If I didn't, did I miss anybody? Okay, so I guess just, I don't know if there's anyone who wants to speak against this specifically, or just people who have questions for Phil.
I have a question, how come it's been so many years getting to this? What's been the objection?
You know, you know, Don, it's, it's, it's a little mystifying to me, too. You know, it's ultimately the, the select board makes the decision about whether to give up their role as a light board. And it's come up a number of times, and it's been two-to-one vote. And it just, just couldn't get, get over the hump. And then, then we put it back on the shelf, and, and it went away. But it's, it, it came to a head when our very well-regarded General Manager of Belmont Light left to go to another town precisely because of this, this governance issue. So it sort of came to the head, it's been percolating in the background. But it got a renewed sense of urgency when, when, when he left suddenly. And now there is a consensus to, there's, the, the light board voted a majority, two-to-one, in favor, which, which, to get it to Town Meeting. The, the select board is going to vote at quarter of nine, if they're on schedule, to see if possibly the person who voted against made it before. We'll see about that. But it's, it's, the time is right, it's the time is now. And I'm not sure there's gonna ever be as good a time as right now, or as many of the stars are aligned to get this, this thing done. I don't have, it's just, it's, I wish I had a better answer for you, Don, but, but that's, that's the way it's been.
Why couldn't citizens put a citizen article in a town meeting for this? They could have done that years ago and have the town meeting decide.
Yep, they could have, they could have, it's just.
I did it for planning board, it didn't work out too well. But, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's always challenging for political bodies to give up power, and it's challenging for, you know, any town, including Belmont, to change the way you do things. People get, you know, used to the way things are done, they don't want to change.
Well, the other thing is, if we, any negative vote from the select board, I'd like to know their reasoning. Somebody should ask them why they voted against it.
Kevin, yeah. Yeah, you can, you can tune in to hear what Adam's gonna say tonight, or look at the recording of what he said at the last light board meeting.
Is he the negative vote?
He's the negative vote. I agree with Adam on many things, but on this one, I respectfully disagree with him. And he's gonna say that Belmont has, already has too many elected boards.
Well, we've got rid of a lot of these boards, we don't need any, but that's, this one here is, should be a separate identity.
Yeah, well, and I actually looked at the number of elected boards in other comparable towns, and Belmont doesn't have any more elected boards than anybody else.
Got some questions, Sheila and then Kevin?
So Phil, thanks, I think it was a great presentation. You've done a wonderful job outlining this. My only question is, does the current General Manager support this as well?
Yes, he does.
Thanks.
Kevin?
Sure, Phil, could you, thanks for the presentation. Could you respond to the following idea about it? I'm not saying this is how I'm voting, but I can imagine, as a board that really kind of requires, you're saying it's even more than ever, it requires expertise in the area of energy and that kind of stuff. So that means, that implies, you could imagine a scenario where only people who knew that industry in detail would go out for elections, and therefore it would become industry-heavy, and therefore it would be more in favor of industrial thinking instead of taxpayer thinking. How would you respond to that, to that risk?
Uh, yeah, there, I mean, the, the point is, is to attract people who have the utility expertise, so that they're in a better position to make wise decisions. And, and people who are, for the most part, people who get involved in town politics are homeowners, and therefore they are taxpayers, and therefore they are ratepayers. So I don't, I suppose if you had a scenario where you had a renter who didn't pay taxes, would have a strong utility interest in, an interest in utility in such a way that was, that was detrimental to the town. I suppose that's possible, but it seems kind of remote. And the other, other 29 towns that have elected, they don't experience that sort of lopsidedness in their elected boards. It turns out to be, it's a pretty balanced distribution. And of course, if there's some elected, some elected utility person who is completely biased towards utility and away from the interests of the town, then he gets voted out of office.
Yep.
Well, not against the town, we're talking about against the ratepayers. Everybody who sits in this town is a ratepayer.
Well, except the renters, right?
They have, they have a meter on their apartments, and they pay the electric bills also.
Yeah.
Fitzie, oh, Fitzie, you're next, okay. Okay, yes, Ms. Cowing?
Sorry, I just realized how dark it was in my dining room. Apparently my kids dimmed the lights, which also I may about to be asking a question that has already been answered, if it has, I'm sorry, small, small people in my house. Would this be something where you would only be able to be elected if you were a resident of the town? Or would we end up in a possible scenario where someone from outside of town, for whatever reason, might run to be part of this board, simply because they have a wealth of knowledge, expertise, are encouraged by someone who knows someone, kind of scenario? Or is this exclusive to residents to run for election?
Yes, you have to be a resident of Belmont in order to run for an elected position, elected board in town.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? You can raise your hand virtually on Zoom, or just kind of raise your hand on your screen. Dave, you got a question, or you just? Nope, okay.
No, I don't, no.
Okay. Okay, do we want to move on then to Article Number 10?
Sure.
Okay. And I think, Alex, are you, you are presenter on that?
Yep. One sec.
There you go, yep.
All right, so as I said, I'm Alex, I'm a senior at BHS, and I've sort of been part of spearheading this campaign for Indigenous Peoples' Day in Belmont. So just a brief history of Indigenous Peoples' Day. In 1992, Brickley, California, was the first municipality to switch away from Columbus State to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And now, I'm sure this number is larger by now, actually, over 175 cities and states have changed their holiday from Columbus State to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, including in Massachusetts, where I believe it's 14 towns now, which I made this change, as you can see here, and in progress right now, Arlington and Bedford. All right, since the Town Meeting begins today, I believe. So they might be moving on to the left side of this list really soon. So briefly, just a quick history about Columbus and sort of why, why it seems to not make sense to me about why we even celebrate him and have a day commemorating him. So first, after arriving in the Bahamas of the so-called New World in 1492, he began to kidnap, enslave, and murder the Taino population, who were native to the islands. All of his actions directly caused the genocide of Native Americans, first decimating the Taino population, leading to the deaths of millions of Indigenous Peoples living on the continent. Also, with the landing of Columbus in the Americas came the Columbian Exchange, which amongst other things ensured the transmission of European diseases to Native Americans. And many of the Native Americans were taken back to Europe as slaves. And following the European invasion of the Americas, up to 95% of the Indigenous Peoples died as a result of the Columbian Exchange. So when we were growing up or otherwise, from a very young age, we often learned about Columbus as a hero who supposedly discovered the Americas. For me personally, this was my initial impression of Columbus when I was younger. I think many of us know the jingle, in 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue. In fact, in many cases, this is one of the first historical events students will even learn about. However, as we have seen, these claims are often misguided by falsehoods. One common misconception being that Columbus discovered Americas.
Can call on Monalais' phone.
Call on Monalais's phone. Sorry.
However, he was not the first, you're apparent to land on the Americas or even North America. Um, and he didn't even do it for Italy. His trip was commissioned by the Spanish government. Um, and the accomplishment for landing on the Americas first for Europeans belongs to the Viking Leif Erikson, uh, who landed on North America in one thousand one C E. Um, however, but before both of them ever landed on North America, millions of Indigenous peoples obviously lived here. And one of the dangers of learning about Columbus as a hero and even celebrating Columbus Day is that it teaches and primes us, especially young kids. Um, to the ideas of white supremacy, racism and imperialism perpetuating a myth of Columbus as some hero. Who committed genocide prevents us as people, as students and as citizens from developing democratic, multicultural and anti-racist attitudes. Um, I'm not going to read uh this quote from Bartolome de las Casas, who traveled with Columbus. But if it really depicts the terrors inflicted by Columbus on Indigenous people. Um, so why we should do this, make this change in Belmont?
Did you do you read why FDR? In nineteen, I think in nineteen thirty-seven, nineteen thirty-nine is the one who made it a national.
Yeah.
I I I read several pages. In the encyclopedia with the guy in the subject and and I only read one, one time when he brought slaves. Uh, I think to Spain, but all all the rest of times he 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 didn't clean out the Caribbean with.
Okay. We're gonna let Alex finish and then we'll have a discussion, okay? We're gonna let.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so as I was saying about why Belmont should make this change, especially in the last year, Belmont has uh said that we aspire to be a place of inclusivity. Um, a welcoming town for people of various races and different backgrounds. Um, so we as a town must challenge our status quo and work to right our wrongdoings to live up to these values. Um, we must be able to uh learn and grow as a community and show that we are, we fully value all of our citizens equally. Celebrating Columbus serves as a reminder of how he took away the lives and land of countless Native Americans. In order to acknowledge his mistreatment of Native Americans, we must stop honoring the violence he committed. The earth-centric name of Columbus State disrespect the legacy of Indigenous peoples by choosing to ignore the horrific acts of Christopher Columbus. Instead, by celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, we can honor the rich traditions and cultures of Indigenous peoples. And their contributions to our nation today instead of a merciless outsider.
I don't consider him merciless, but he is an outsider. And and if you and if you read some of the things I've read about what the Indians did to us, and I don't like this idea of the white supremacy. I am so sick and tired of that term. This this country is probably the the most. Mixed cultural uh humans uh country in the whole world. There's more cultures in this country than there is in any other country in the world. So, you know, I I'm tired of hearing that thing about we're racist, 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 and now they're teaching kids because they're white. They're racist. That's that's ridiculous. I'm tired of hearing them.
So Alex, do you want to take a take a just take an opportunity to respond to what Mr.?
I mean, ju- just in a few words, a lot of that is rooted in the slavery that America has long been. Uh, known for, especially in the first hundred fifty years of the uh of the U.S. But uh. Anyway, I'll finish my presentation and then we can get into more questions. Um, so I think it's important to note that we cannot and we must not celebrate both Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day. And while we understand that that changing the name of the holiday may come as an unprovoked attack on Italians. Who sometimes use the holiday as a way to celebrate their heritage. But really, this is about Native American genocide, and if we as Belmontians and Italian Americans want to live up to the words of welcoming and inclusive. We have to reconcile and change this to Indigenous Peoples' Day. By celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, Italians who were once marginalized and discriminated against in America's early years. As well as other previously marginalized groups can use their platforms to ensure that we are not repeating the same patterns of discrimination that they endured. While Italian Americans are now well represented and respected today, Native Americans often appear invisible. Um, and they have nowhere near the representation nor the respect their cultures deserve. So briefly, uh, I will just show. That we have a lot of support around Belmont, more than six hundred individuals who have signed a petition to change Columbus State Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, as well as testimony of support from many groups and individuals, as you can see. All right, I can launch into questions if you'd like.
Okay. Don, we've heard from you. Are there other uh folks on the line who want to either? Way in in opposition to this or have a question for Alex? I think either is either is a fair game. I'll just, I mean, Alex, I'll I'll just say, um, oh, okay, sorry, Melissa, go ahead.
Well, I just have a question about. It being a is it a town holiday or is this just a statement of the town or like are our employees getting this day as a holiday? They already and.
Well, so all references of Columbus Day on any town documents, town calendars, all of that, all of those will be switched to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Obviously, we're not overriding the state and federal holiday that exists, but in Belmont, that is how we will refer to it.
Okay, so it's like our the other question I had was. For. Whether it seems to me a separate thing to say we're not going to have Columbus Day versus we are going to have Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I'm not sure that. Ended I the Indigenous people culture necessarily want to have Columbus Day as their particular day. And I I don't know, is there, has there been any statement from any Native American group about their feelings about? Having this day as their day?
So there is the the group leading the campaign statewide, the native group there. Um, they've supported us. They've written a letter of um support for us. That was included in our packets to town meeting members that should have been sent out last week. Um, I don't know if those were received yet. And as and just to touch upon. Sort of the separation, it's really together because we're not, we're not adding a new holiday. We're changing the name. So that we can recognize the terrors that Columbus really inflicted on the Indigenous peoples and sort of. Even the lasting impact that has on uh to today. And and sort of switching that around sort of acknowledges what they went through and and acknowledges their contributions to our society. And acknowledges that we understand that Columbus is flawed in that. Maybe in the past, we didn't really see those things, but now we've learned more, we've researched more. Our standards have changed and so that's why. We 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 know we can reverse and switch away from that.
So it's more like a memorial type?
It's 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 partly symbolic, but it's also real. Yes.
It strikes me that there are that there are two things at work here. One is. To recognize the indigenous tribes who inhabited North America for millennia before. Western before Europeans arrived and had thriving indigenous cultures. The other is to more or less remove a celebration of a guy who I think history has reevaluated as being. Not such a great person and representative of a period in time that. From one end looks like, you know, dramatic, wonderful, exciting exploration, and from the other end looks like pestilence and death. And I'll note that the Massachusetts, the state of Massachusetts is named after the Massachusetts tribe. Who occupied most of eastern Massachusetts and who were almost entirely wiped out in the early sixteen hundreds after their initial contact with Europeans by. Leptospirosis and and then later by by cholera and other diseases that the Europeans brought with them. And, you know, we memorialize them with the name of our state. But they're almost entirely eradicated at the same time. So. Uh, so I think both those, I think that's what's sort of what's intention here is like, well, why don't we just have a different holiday? And it's like, it's not just about. It's not just about having a holiday for the Indigenous people. It's also about what Columbus did. And what that period represented for the people who were here before us, uh, for most of us, anyway. Others. I I was expecting there to be shouting and screaming and and chair throwing. You know, I I I must say. But are there are there other questions or or comments? If not, um, we can move on to section eleven and thank Alex for Alex. Thank you for taking a leadership on this and and taking time out of your even coming presented to us. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
And Alex, just so you know, the the mail did come today, so got it. At least some of us got it.
I did. Yes, we did. Precinct date, we got our mail.
Okay, great. Alex, thank you very much. And let's uh let's move on to um. The next item, which is the resolution on fossil-free new construction. And taking the lead on that is. Phil, who's taking the lead on that?
So it's me.
It's Marty.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Marty. I'm my.
Uh, can you see my screen? Can you see the screen?
We can see you.
Nope.
Oh, no screen.
Can you grant uh Marty access so that he can share his screen?
Yeah, he should. Multiple participants can share, but Alex, you might have to stop sharing if you're, although I think you did. There, there we go.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Uh, so so I'm Marty Bitner. Um, in addition to being the town meeting member in precinct eight, I'm also the co-chair of the Energy Committee in Belmont. And to remind people, the. The mission of the Energy Committee is to help Belmont achieve its climate action goals. And we'll talk more about that in a second. But the article eleven is a resolution calling on the state legislature to do three things. One is to change state building code to mandate fossil-free construction for all new buildings statewide. Uh, so statewide action. Uh, second is to create a zero net energy stretch code requiring building electrification. Um, so you you may recognize, you know, the the term stretch code. And be familiar with that in terms of a, that's our current building code that we've opted into. At this point, these the that stretch code is ten years old now, um, and so it really needs to be updated. Um, and then finally is is to revise state gas law to give towns like Belmont the authority to restrict. Future gas permits on that on new construction as we may see fit. So just to go back to our stated goals, and this is both locally here in Belmont and statewide. So in two thousand nine, town meeting adopted the Climate Action Plan, which called for reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. By eighty percent below two thousand seven levels by twenty fifty. And twenty nineteen, town meeting adopted the Belmont Climate Action Roadmap. Uh, for strategic electrification, and that was developed by the Energy Committee, uh, essentially a roadmap for. How do we actually achieve our stated climate, climate goals? And then recently last year, uh, the state as a whole recommitted and, uh, in fact, uh, upped their commitment to. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions eighty-five percent by twenty fifty. Um, and here's, here's how we're doing. So, uh, in a few years ago, the Energy Committee. Tallied up Belmont's carbon emissions and. That's that's shown by the red line there. So that's, uh, you know, starting in two thousand eight. To um, to where we were when we measured back in twenty fifteen. And you can see, you know, the the dotted line is is would be sort of a linear trend in in our, uh, the needed. Carbon emissions reductions to get to our goal by twenty fifty and and, you know, we're we're not on track at this point, so we really need to bend that curve. And uh, the Energy Committee also endeavored to take a census of where our current carbon emissions come from. And so here's just a pie chart showing that and uh, there's essentially three, three categories. And the the biggest one is from heating our buildings, so oil and natural gas heating um for all the buildings in town. Transportation is a close second and then electricity generation overall is is third. So these are really the three things we need to address. And again, the biggest one has to do with heating our homes and and buildings. Won't go through all of this, but um, so just to say that I. In terms of electrification, the the technology is there and, you know, high efficiency electric heating. Is installed in many buildings and will be shortly uh in the the new middle and high school, which is going to be a completely electric building. So the technology is there. It works great. Uh, it's efficient. And an important point about this, our goals overall and with related to electrification is. Just to think about the emissions from the way we heat our buildings. So so here we show uh the the red, the red column shows carbon emissions for. Say for a home that's that's heated with a gas boiler. Um, and then the two blue bars show that that same home heated with electric heat pumps. And one important thing to note is that even today with the way we produce our electricity, which. You know, some mix of renewable energy, natural get burning natural gas, et cetera. Using electric heating is significantly cleaner, meaning lower carbon emissions than than gas furnace is today. And um, the stated intention of Belmont Light and the state as a whole is to increasingly clean up our grid. Our electricity. So as time goes by, if you heat your home with electricity. Your your carbon emissions go down without you even doing anything, just by nature of your using electricity as your fuel. Whereas if you if you heat your home with natural gas, um, it is what it is. It never really improves. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna make headway in this. We really need to, you know, make a change and, uh, you know, this this resolution wants to start with really the low hanging fruit, which is is new construction. And so at that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Marty. Do we have um, uh, any questions or anybody who um is interested in speaking against this article specifically? I guess what as you know, for for homeowners, Marty, what would this, what would this uh portend or or what what impact would we be likely to see in terms of? You know, our, you know, our experience or if we were doing an addition or new construction or something like that.
Yeah, it's a so for most, in most cases for homeowners, it'd be nothing because this is strictly for new construction, right? So if you. If you were, you know, one of the rare people who's absolutely building a home from scratch, then this, you know, this would. You know, impact you right on that front, but otherwise, um, you know, if you're doing a standard renovation, this this doesn't come into play.
Are there other questions? Yes, Fitzy.
So a few questions. Um, the first is. How does this interplay with improving and increasing housing stock, both on a town level and a statewide level? Because while. Yes, it is, say, cheaper now to do this than it was ten years ago. Um, as someone who just went and looked into replacing oil with um heat pumps, et cetera, it was still. Way prohibitive for us. Um, it just wasn't even on the table. And so I just, I I have to say I'm a little concerned with this because I'm concerned about the implications for new constructing. Construction of affordable housing and will something like this scare away contractors from developing affordable housing because if. The the construction of the housing is so prohibitive. It's it's, are we going to inadvertently create a situation where it's? More attractive to construction to build very expensive but net zero homes as opposed to. You know. Creating affordable housing in an affordable way. I I guess that's just my my main concern is that this could inadvertently cause. Other issues with other stated goals of both our town and our state.
Yeah, that's a great question. And so so one thing, so I I pulled up one of the slides that I I didn't talk to, but um. There there's an organization called the Rocky Mountain. there, there's an organization called the Rocky Mountain Institute and they, they calculated out the costs, right? Comparing to building, you know, traditional sort of mixed fuel home heated with gas versus an all electric home, right? And they, and they found that the, you know, upfront cost for all electric is actually a little bit cheaper. And, and your, your experience is, is exactly right in terms of for someone with an existing home who just wants to switch their heating system to heat pumps, that is indeed more expensive. I mean, I've, I've experienced that myself. And so you're, you're spot on. The, the trick with new construction is if you install a heat pump, you now you don't have, you avoid installing a heating system. You also avoid installing a separate cooling system. So you kind of get a two for one. So the new construction in particular is more cost favorable than, you know, redoing your house, right, yourself? And so, so you know, so that's, that's something important to keep in mind. The other thing about affordable housing is there's, so right down the road on Concord Ave, just across the border in Cambridge, there's a new affordable housing complex going up that's zero net energy. And so, and there, there's a number of projects in the state that are both affordable housing and achieving these climate goals. And so, so they're not, they're not necessarily running counter to each other. And in fact, if you make a, you know, very tight, well insulated home that's, that's efficient, you're, you know, you're gifting the, the residents of those spaces lower utility bills going forward, right? So long as you don't preclude building the thing in the first place, which I think is your, is your, your concern. But also note that the McLean development, we've been in conversation with the developer there who's committed to you know, it's not clear if he's going to go full electrification, but he's going to get pretty close to the things that we're proposing here. And, you know, it's not, it's not making him run for the hills. So, so, so I think this is actually doable without undermining, you know, affordable housing, which I, I completely agree with as well.
Okay. And my other question is, this is just, this is like a non-binding resolution, right? This is just us indicating as a town that we support this effort?
Yeah. And I'll say, you know, last year, the Energy Committee put together, you know, an intention for a binding resolution to, you know, ask for home rule petition. You know, to you know, restrict gas permits for new construction. And Brookline had gone a little bit before us and passed something similar. And then the Attorney General said that they can't do that. It was, you know, undermined by, you know, existing state law. And so, so we're at the point where we have to ask the state basically to allow us to have, either to do it themselves or to grant us the autonomy to do it. And, you know, and if they did, then, you know, then we would come back later at some point with more specifics. But for now, this is, as you say, just, you know, a resolution of our intentions as a town.
Anthony, your hand is up?
Yeah, this is a quick, quick question, thinking longer term, since we talked about the light board. So if electrification of homes becomes more widespread and truly widespread, and if electric vehicles become more common, as I expect they will be, is our current electrical grid or that plus all of the upgrades that we have intended to make so far, is it up to it? Or are we looking also at a future of additional upgrades?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the CADMS is a consulting group on energy space and they, they did some work for Belmont Light around this during the Heat Smart Belmont Campaign, when we were promoting heat pump adoption. Because the natural question is, you know, this sounds great to drive electric cars and use electric heat pumps, but are we going to run out of, you know, capacity on the grid? And so, so the answer for specifically, you know, for buildings is that right now Belmont is a summer peaking utility. So, so here it shows, right, there's the peak in the summer at about 34 megawatts. The new substation we put in has a 60 megawatt capacity. So we have plenty of headroom in the summer, but the summer is not really, really what we're worried about if we talk about electrifying building heating, right? We worry about what does that do to our peak in the winter? So that this table here shows you know, what, what that means for electric consumption as a function of percents, percent of homes that are electrified. And, you know, the answer right now is we could, we could, we have enough spare capacity right now to instantly make 50% of all of our homes, you know, electrified with heat pumps. And then, you know, this is going to happen slowly over time, of course, you know, people aren't going to all replace their heating systems. And so we have enough headroom that this is not going to hit us, you know, square in the face and, and, you know, cause problems. And as far as the electric vehicles go, there's ways to incentivize people and the right thing to do actually is to charge your car overnight. So at three o'clock in the morning, when nobody's really using electricity, there's plenty of spare capacity. And so, you know, so between Belmont Light properly incentivizing people to charge their car at the right time and the fact that we have this extra headroom with the existing substation, I think we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Kevin, go ahead. Sorry.
Hi, Marty. Thank you. Similar to Anthony's, just on a different thing, the notion of having fossil fuel free building. Just checking, is the infrastructure in place to be able to do that? I understand it could be an incentive to create that infrastructure, but could you right now, if that were passed tomorrow, could people actually do it? Is that, does the infrastructure exist to make a fully fossil free building readily?
Yeah, I, I live in one myself right now. So I, I, I mean, I, I drive electric cars. We have electric heat pumps as our only source of heating. And we don't yet have it thanks to the pandemic, but we, we ordered a new oven in January, which will be an induction oven. And that'll be all electric. And so, and so, you know, we have, I, I think the key thing is you need to have 200 amp service. And so there are a lot of folks who, you know, right now maybe have 100 amp service, right, in older homes and things so that, you know, that would need to be updated. But, but that's again, sort of a choice for people. I mean, unrelated to this article, right? This is specifically for new construction, but but it is possible for people, existing homeowners to do this as well. Sure.
And then the other question is, um, I can't tell your figures about savings and so forth, the relative stuff. Does that, is that, how do I put it? Is it that in isolation of a gas fueled house versus a electricity fueled house in and its own self? Or does it also take into account, well, you're, you're burning fossil fuels to make the electricity in the first place? How do, how do, how do we take these figures?
So do you mean in terms of the, the carbon emissions from?
Yeah, yeah, the net carbon emission as opposed to the local effect.
Right. Yeah. And I think this figure kind of speaks to that in some way. And I think the, the key thing to know is, and people talk about, you know, high efficiency gas boilers, right? When they, they install those in their house and, you know, and they're, they're pretty good, right? But that's 95% efficient, which sounds good if you think that the maximum efficiency is 100%. But heat pumps can actually be 200 to 300% efficient. And the reason is they're moving heat around instead of sort of generating new heat. And so heat pumps have a real advantage in efficiency over traditional gas furnaces. So that's, that's one way that they can reduce their carbon emissions is that they simply use less energy to make the same amount of heat, if that, if that sort of makes sense. And additionally to that, if you can make the electricity, you know, on the, on the far end, right? If we could have completely clean, carbon free electricity.
Yes.
And if you electrify, then the whole, the whole thing is carbon free, right? And we're not there yet, but you know, we're, you know, we're going to build wind turbines, you know, off, off, off the coast at some point. And there'll be increasingly green sources of electricity to facilitate that as well. And does that address what you're kind of getting at or?
Kind of, yeah. I'm just trying to gauge whether if every, everyone goes completely electric, but, but electricity itself is dirty to some extent. What is the net? How do we know what the net really is about gas versus electricity as a culture, not individually?
I, and, and I think I, you, you said local before, and so maybe what you're getting at is, you know, if Belmont did this, are we just shifting our emissions to some other town that has a power plant? Is that kind of something you're thinking about or?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Coal burning power plant.
Yeah, like that. That's something like that. I don't know enough about the industry to know.
Yeah. So, so generally, you know, Massachusetts burns virtually none, if any coal these days, right? So we generate most of our electricity from natural gas. And so, you know, so naively you might say, well, if you're burning natural gas to make electricity, who cares if you, what, what, that's just the same as using a gas furnace. But it turns out it's way more efficient for a big, you know, generator to burn gas to make electricity than it is for all of us to have small furnaces in our homes to, to burn our own gas kind of thing, right? That's, that's one part. And then there's also again, just that, that heat pumps are so much remarkably more efficient than, than, you know, gas furnaces. And that, that's the other piece that makes this overall a, a net win in terms of carbon.
Marty, when does the solar farm up at the incinerator site going to come online, if ever?
I, last I heard that there, there was iron flocculent found on the site. And there's a, apparently that would cost several million dollars to, you know, take care of. And of course, we don't have the, we didn't have the money before and we really don't have the money now. And so I think there's conversations, you know, Blaine Clancy and folks to see if, is that really our responsibility or you know, can the state take care of that or what? So it's, unfortunately, it's hung up on you know, some technical issues, but.
Iron Flocculent, that's my favorite band.
I saw them at the channel.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. What, what are the alternatives then if that? Do we then have the option? Okay. I mean, I always thought that the solar farm was the least disruptive option we had.
Yeah, I think that's my take too, but you know, we still have to cap the site no matter what. And so, you know, there's a cost to capping the site, which I think maybe we're like $800,000 short last I heard. And then there's this added iron flocculent problem. So it's, it's kind of stuck in the muck unfortunately, but maybe we can use some of the, you know, American recovery funds for this cleanup is one, one idea. So we'll see.
Um, Paul? Yes. Could I, could I take the liberty just to answer the, this question? The, let's, a couple of things. One is Belmont Light is is, has been moving very aggressively to, to 100%, non emitting. So by 2022, their power supply will be 100% non emitting. And, and secondly, there are over 350 residential homes that have solar. And Belmont Light has just provided additional funding to incentivize residential solar. So the, the, our, our own local electric mix is going to get greener and greener.
Does that answer your, your question, Kevin?
Yeah, it goes toward it. I just, I'm a numbers guy, so I was looking to see how the math works out. So yes, if you're going, that, that's the kind of information that helps me.
Are there other questions for Marty on item, no, article number 11? Okay, we're, we're at the hour mark. I mean, oh. People there, okay. Yeah, we're, we're, we're at the hour mark. And if, if, you know, in terms of what would be left to discuss, I think the only one that might bear on discussion is just the, the bylaw change regarding appointments to warrant committee. If, if people feel like they want to have a conversation about that, we could, otherwise we could just break and, and we'll, we'll have another one of these around the, the meaty financial articles when, when it comes time to talk about those.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Sheila, for co-hosting and we'll do this again, precinct four and precinct eight.